Well, as I have the pleasure of serving as the Strategy and Community Relations Director for Brooks, first and foremost, thank you, thanks each and every one of you all for being here. We appreciate it. We certainly were not expecting 200 people. We just wanted to give everyone options on where they wanted to sit and be able to socially distance if you so please. And so, thank you all again for taking the time to be here. We do appreciate it if you all just kind of continue to socially distance if you can. If you're not eating or drinking, wear your mask, por favor. We greatly appreciate that. So you all know we are live streaming. Again, we understand that COVID still very much is a thing. And so, we are allowing, so if you have your friends or family members that were not or did not want to come in person, please let them know that we are live streaming. And then, we'll also be posting this recorded town hall meeting later for all of those in our surrounding neighborhoods to be able to get this information as well. And so, a couple of housekeeping items right over to my right-hand side. You have an exit that leads to both the men's and women's bathrooms if you all need to. And then, we have several exits. All of these doors, we have the whole ballroom. And so, just in case of an emergency, we have several exits. Without further ado, I do want to recognize a couple people in the audience. First, we will be hearing later from our newly-elected District 3 Councilwoman, Ms. Phyllis Villarreal. Thank you so much for being here. We have the Brooks Board Chairman, Mr. Jim Campbell. Brooks President and CEO, Mr. Leo Gomez, who you'll also hear from. Our Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Samantha Burke. Couple other staff members. You all saw our Community Relations Coordinator walking in. That's Stephanie Garcia. And so, she's the one that put on today's meeting. So, thank you so much, Stephanie, for organizing a great meeting. And she's also the one that's in charge of the fun events like movies and the Fiesta Event, Chancas de las Vezes. And so, you want to be her friend. And so, again, thank you, Stephanie. She's right outside the door. Here somewhere, our Government Relations Manager, Leana Puente. And I think last but not least, our Digital Coordinator, John Fabian. I heard from most, if not all of you all, that you heard about today's meeting because of Facebook. And so, thank you, John, for getting the word out and making sure that all of you all and several of your neighbors were able to receive the message about today's town hall meeting. And so, again, some of the people that I named off, I purposely did so because those are the people that, for some reason, we don't have time to get to every single question, those are the people that you are free to approach and ask some of the other questions, all right? Okay. So, next up, a lot of what we're talking about today is, there's a lot going on here at Brooks. And so, our President and CEO will be giving you an update on all of those things. What has opened since the pandemic, what's about to open. And then, of course, the main topic of today is infrastructure priorities. And so, Mr. Leo Gomez.
Thank you, Connie. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you all. Good to see you all. It's been way too long since we've done this. I appreciate everybody coming out. Thanks for staying safe. Thanks for keeping your distance and keeping your mask on. And if not, you're at least with the appropriate distance. And so, thank you all for doing that. It's nothing like being able to meet in person, be here in person, talk to each other in person, celebrate the things that we should be celebrating, but at the same time, discuss anything that might be a challenge in our community that we should discuss as a group. So, I'm really glad to be here. John, this is quite a production here. Look at these cameras. Look at this. What a great team. Would we give them all a round of applause, please? They're going to make me look like a superstar until you all start giving me some hard questions. Then, we'll see what happens to me. I've got a little bit of time, and I'm, what's between you all and listening to our council member representing the area, Councilwoman Phyllis Villarreal, who, again, I am delighted that you're on the council, ma'am, and delighted to be your partner working in this part of San Antonio. We've got good things to come. So, with that, let's get the show started, right? I'm sorry? What do I do with this? Oh, I got to do that myself? What do you all get paid for? All right. What is Brooks? I like to start with this question all the time, even with my team, because it reminds us what we're really here for. And here's, I'll get right to the point of why we ask this question and remind ourselves every day. Because we're not here to just redevelop a former Air Force Base. We are here to create regional prosperity as we redevelop the former Air Force Base. I say that to say, we care about what's going on down the street, up the street, to the west, to the east, to the north, and to the south of us. We care in terms of what opportunities there are for the neighborhoods that surround us, the infrastructure in the neighborhoods that surround us and such. Bottom line is, we are here to help promote and develop regional prosperity. Right, Councilwoman? Right, Chairman? And so, that's what we're here for. Let's keep that in mind as I go through this presentation, please. I want to remind us what it looked like out here in 2003. This was the 1,300 acres that made up Brooks in 2003, valued back then at $36 million and change. $36 million and change. Take a good look at that slide, because I want to show you where it is as of 2018. No. I don't see, well, is the Amazon facility complete on this one?
Yes.
Okay. I'm arguing with the one that put the slides together. All right. So, as of 2021, but in 2018, the appraisal, remember, 2003, it was how much? How much, everybody?
Thirty-six point eight.
In 2018, it is $645 million. Y'all, those of you that are math geeks, I'm not one of them, but a math geek told me that means a 20% improvement in value per year. That is incredible for any kind of investment. And that's what's been going on here at Brooks. So, you can only imagine what it's meant for the surrounding area as well, okay? On top of that, we've got all these things going on. I'll get to telling you what kind of development we've got going on this year on top of that $645 million plus, that's the '18 appraisal, remember? We're about to be appraised again, and we'll be pretty darned close to the $1 billion mark. But let's take a look at live here. We've got 2,300 people living on the Brooks campus today. 2,300 people who are constituents of Councilwoman Phyllis Villarreal on the Brooks campus today. But we've got 513 new units coming online in the next year and a half to two years. You know what that means on an average of two people per? We'd be adding another thousand. Is that math right? For those of you that are my deep friends, is a thousand right, more or less?
Yes.
I like to round off everybody. So, growth is coming just immediately in the next year to two years, not to mention what I'll talk about a little later over the next three to five years. If you look at the numbers of employees, right smack in the middle there, 3,200 employees on the Brooks campus, literally on the 1,300 acres that used to be the Air Force Base. Look at what we're projecting, 5,000-plus by the year 2025. That's only in four years, right? Actually, three and a half years. 5,000 people working on the Brooks campus every day. This one really excites me today. 2,900 students enrolled at schools on the Brooks campus. Keep in mind, we not only have the medical school, we have three high schools and supporting middle schools and elementary schools feeding into them. Brooks Academy of Science Engineering, Compass Rose, and Cast Med of S A I S D. Those three schools, plus the University of Encarnated Word School of Medicine, totals to 2,900 students. Look at what we're projecting we're going to reach in a couple of years. 5,000-plus students coming onto the Brooks campus every day. Here are the newest employers that we brought onto the campus this last year. Everybody, has everybody heard of Amazon?
Uh huh.
If I don't have Amazon at my front door every day, something's wrong with either me or my wife, because we are hoarding literally almost every day. And so, we're thrilled to have them. They will eventually employ at least 500 people on the Brooks campus. And yes, the shuttles that will be coming in and out and everything that comes along with this, which is why we're going to be talking about infrastructure priorities here in a bit. Okin Process, a company that is founded and headquartered in the Czech Republic. Their first North American operation is in Texas. In Texas, they chose San Antonio. In San Antonio, they chose Brooks. They now have employed about 400 employees, and they have the potential, I believe, this is not them, I'm not committing for them, I believe they have the potential to reach up to 1,000 employees. It's our job at Brooks to work with them, to give them the space to grow and help them with the business they need to gain the contracts to create those additional jobs. We have Cuisine Solutions, the largest sous vide plant in the world. Anybody knows, anybody know what sous vide is or a sous vide pot, right? The French process for cooking in water over a long period of time? Well, imagine a pot that is 350,000 square feet big. Imagine how many chicken quarters and ribs and Starbucks egg bites they can put out a day, right? They are also close to 400 employees as of today and have the possibility of reaching nearly 1,000 at full capacity. So, we're thrilled to have them as well. So, I've mentioned the three there that are new for this year, Amazon, Okin, and Cuisine Solutions, adding over 2,000 jobs over the next couple of years here. I'm also thrilled to share with you all, if you all haven't noticed already, GFR and the retail development right in front of the medical school. We have Don Benito's Cocina y Cantina that's already operating and open for dinner. You could probably go there right after this if you wanted to. We're great to have them. We've got Kung-Fu Tea. We've got some great smoothies. I love Jimmy John's. McAllister, you can keep going on. Another Jimmy John's fan? I like the Cubano Anwich, okay? If anybody's interested in knowing what I would order, Cubano Anwich. Amazing the number and the growth of residential opportunities here. And mostly, so far, they've been multifamily apartments, right? And so, if you've got an apartment, if you've got some toys, or you've got that extra bedroom that you can't get rid of because it belonged to Tia and Tia gave it to you, et cetera, right? We all have those. And you want a climate-controlled storage space, we literally have it on campus on City-Based Landing. And in addition to that, there's 30 units for small businesses that are available, and those are going pretty quickly, believe it or not. So, thrilled to have them. What's coming now after those? We've got the Green Line Extension, which I'm thrilled. I hope everybody's been hearing about that. I love our Green Line Park. I love the team at Brooks that takes care of that park for all of you. I hope everybody has enjoyed it, and if not, I urge you to go out and enjoy it. Forty-three acres, five cascading ponds, pavilions, 10-foot wide paths for you to enjoy. I love that Compass Rose set up a fishing tournament for kiddos just a few weekends ago. Had over 100 students out there in a fishing tournament, because if you don't know, all our ponds are stocked on an annual basis. And I look forward to everybody being able to enjoy that catch and release, if you will. But if you keep it, well, I won't go there. But the Green Line Extension is actually a quarter-mile connection between the Green Line Park and the Mission Reach on the San Antonio River. So, literally, you can come out the hotel, go across the street, get on the Green Line Park Trail, go south, and it'll take you all the way to the San Antonio River and the Mission Reach. If you turn left, you're at Mission San Juan. If you turn right, you go up to Mission San Jose. It's fantastic. Literally, we are connected to downtown by these trails by making this one-quarter-mile connection that goes under Pressa and goes under the railroad track, okay? Again, we haven't had the formal opening for it, and I don't know whether it's still closed off yet, Connie and team. If it's still, it's still closed off, okay? I'm not going to tell you to go around, but it's done. The dog parks. I am thrilled with the dog parks by our main trailhead at the Green Line Park. The small dog park is completed. So, if you've got a small dog, please take it, enjoy that space. It's what it's for. Then, notice right next to it a much larger area for the large dog park. We're about to begin the investment of about 150 grand to 200 grand in the amenities that we're going to add to that so that the large dogs and their human parents can enjoy, right? So, we're thrilled to have it, and I really believe we're going to have among the best dog parks in San Antonio. La Gloria is well under construction over there in front of the medical school. I anticipate maybe by the holidays, maybe by the holidays that they would be open. In the meantime, if you want a good margarita from La Gloria, La Gloria's margarita truck is here periodically, and it's on our social media when they are going to be here. But I look forward to having my goodies at La Gloria here real soon. South Lake at Brooks is really exciting. It's this rendering right up here. The first 62 units of homes on the Brooks campus that will be available for purchase, okay? Right on the Green Line Park, across the street from the main pavilion of the Green Line Park. Being built by TerraMark Homes, the response they've gotten, the list of interested parties is already more than the units that are being planned, and the developer's already talking to us about a Phase Two, okay, for South Lake at Brooks. I'm excited with what that's going to bring and even more residents. But more importantly, the first real opportunity to actually purchase a home at Brooks if you're interested in a purchase rather than renting an apartment. And then, finally, the Town Center. How long has this been, this hotel been here? Almost five years, right? You all notice all the green space in front and around the hotel. We've been striving for a number of years to begin developing all this green space into a Town Center, okay? So that this hotel, when you walk out the front door, you've got restaurants to the right and restaurants to the left, and many choices, good choices, okay? And not just chain brand choices, but local choices, okay? Well, we've signed a deal on most of that Town Center development. Today, the board, the board gave us the authority to do the same thing for the rest of it south of the driveway. So, I'm excited that within the next six months, we're going to have a groundbreaking or groundwork is going to begin on all that land in front of the hotel so that within 18 months, if not sooner, we're going to begin to have the first new restaurants right here, right in front of the hotel, okay? And that's for you all to enjoy. You can pick one for Monday, one for Tuesday, one for Wednesday, one for Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. You can go somewhere else in San Antonio, right? Right out, we'll give the rest of San Antonio that opportunity, okay? Infrastructure. Here's what we're here to really talk about and the real message of the day. The first thing we want you to know is that to date, we have invested over $89 million in building new roads or rebuilding old roads on the Brooks campus, okay? What we do on the campus is important to the surrounding area, because if we don't manage the congestion within our own campus, we're going to push it off into the surrounding neighborhoods. We don't want to do that. As we grow jobs, as we grow residential opportunities, we have got to deal with that infrastructure. I would like to think that we're somewhat ahead of it, but we are not as ahead of it as I'd like it to be in some respects, because we're aiming for having everything that we need to bring onto the campus. Fortunately, the council members that represent this district understand that need for investment and have worked with us and have led in working with city council to get the investment. Councilwoman Rebecca Villarreal, and now Phyllis is taking the flag and carrying on with it, and we'll talk about a couple of those opportunities here soon. Let me, oh, the road project's underway. I was going to get ahead of myself. Right now, under construction, we have about $25 million worth of work, right, David? David is with the City Public Works, who is responsible for building these roads as part of the bond package. All three of these road projects were funded through the 2017 bond package, okay? So, if you voted for it, thank you. If you didn't vote for it, I hope you're going to appreciate it so that you can vote for the ones we're going to propose for the next bond package, okay? But we, $25 million worth. Leister will literally connect Aviation and Goliad Road to South New Braunfels. On the south part of our campus. Really, a road that's going to help us with the traffic that's generated by those big new employers, as well as all those new students coming to the expanded Brooks Academy of Science and Engineering. Then, we have Research Plaza to South Pressa Street. Believe it or not, we're taking that road that runs between, or runs in front of the hospital, and it's going to go due west and go all the way out till it intersects with Pressa. That's going to do a great job of ingress egress onto and our campus as well. That's well under construction. David, I'm not sure when that's scheduled to be completed, but...
Research Plaza will be in the summer of next year.
Summer of next year. So, less than a year from now. Less than a year from now. Then, we've got, where is it? Here. Inner Circle to Research Plaza. It's a little part of that half-circle that'll complete in its intersection with Research, which is now being taken out to Pressa, okay? So, what's important about those? They really help with the ingress egress, the traffic congestion that's going to be created by all those jobs with the new employers in our light industrial park. Helps them get off the campus onto Pressa or off onto Goliad Road to get onto I-10 or to Highway 37, okay? Our priorities. Start with the rebuilding of Sidney Brooks all the way from east to west, west to east on our campus. If Brooks is going to be the Town Center of the Brooks region, which to me means the Town Center of Southeast San Antonio, 10 minutes from downtown, complementing downtown, it needs a main street that justifies that Town Center. The development that we're going to have on both sides of Sidney Brooks over the next two to three, definitely the next five years, if we've, is going to make this street one that we cannot afford to keep the way it is today, okay? So, imagine Sidney Brooks being rebuilt, east to west, two lanes each direction with a median, and 10-to-12-foot pedestrian pass on both sides with landscaping that protects the pedestrians from the vehicle traffic. And so, developed in a way that really meets the complete street concept, for those of you that might know what that means. But it's really, as far as I'm concerned in my lingo, I say it's a street designed to be really friendly to pedestrians and people on bikes and facilitate future use of a system like autonomous vehicles someday. And so, all that is being designed into this project. It is the number-one project that we are requesting of the Councilwoman to help us advocate for in the city's bond package in the appropriate bucket of citywide projects. And so, it's a $35-to-37 million project. But that is Brooks Main Street, and if we're going to become the Town Center of the Brooks region and service the surrounding area, this street must be invested in. And so, I'm asking you all today to be, please keep that in mind and understand what that could mean to help alleviate congestion within the Brooks campus so it doesn't spill over into congestion in the surrounding area. By the way, it's not on here, and Connie's far away enough that she can't hit me. The MPO, which adds federal dollars and state dollars to local dollars for major infrastructure projects, funded a project of almost $20 million to make improvements to the interchange of 37 and Military Drive, okay? It's going to expand on that diamond, they call it a diamond something or another, David, for the on-ramps, off-ramps. Plus, they're going to create an off-ramp and access road south of the intersection, both directions. So, it really is going to open up the possibility of taking City-Based Landing all the way across straight to the highway and further adding an egress and ingress option onto the Brooks campus in the surrounding area. Plus, the number-one thing it's going to do is really address the congestion that we all already see building up every Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at that intersection. So, kudos to Tech dot, kudos to the MPO for that investment. However, they didn't fund South New Braunfels to 410, which has been a priority of ours for eight-plus years, probably 10-plus years, okay? So, what I do want to share with you all, that while it did not get funded, we already are visiting with people within the city, David. Tamika, the Director of Transportation in particular, and we'll be having conversations with our friends at VIA as well on the appropriate federal grant opportunity for us to pursue to get that project funded. So, our priorities going forward are Sidney Brooks and the city bond package and getting funding someday for South New Braunfels to 410 via a federal grant opportunity, okay? You all hear about all this federal money that's supposedly going to come down for infrastructure throughout the country. Well, a lot of it is coming to San Antonio, and I hope we find an opportunity to get some of it to complete South New Braunfels to 410. So, again, how have we evolved? We've, in our time, had $818 million worth of development. We've created over 5,000 jobs in the area. We will have 5,000 jobs on the Brooks campus alone, plus another 1,000-plus in the immediate area around Brooks. We currently have $310 million of development underway. Again, I'm not a math geek, but I think that means we're going to get to a point real soon here where Brooks is worth more than $1 billion, okay? Who would have thought that in Southeast San Antonio 10, 15 years ago? It's happening, and it wouldn't be happening without your support, and we really thank you for your support. It's far from perfect, and it's why we have this Town Hall meeting. I'm glad to hear the... Kudos to be expressed, but I'm also all ears on what we might need to do to address some of the challenges that you have. And before I stop, I want to recognize Board Member Rudy Garza, who has joined us, along with our Chairman of the Board, of course, Jim Campbell that's over there. So, thank you for joining us, Rudy. Mr. Chairman, thank you for being here. Councilwoman, it's going to be... Oh, it says questions? I got to take questions, is what Connie is telling me. So... Yes, ma'am?
This is where our Councilwoman, I live down the road, I live in town from here. I live near New Braunfels and Hopewell, and I'm up to Taylor Court, really. They started a project over there, building sidewalks for the kids, they get to and from the bus stop, and school, and all that. They stopped halfway in my neighbor's yard. They never continued on, but all those wonderful, lovely, heavy trucks, they're down on my curb, and I know where I have a curb. It has been brought up supposedly to saw several years ago when they were doing all that work. So, when we have a rain, all the rain on that whole street comes through my yard and through my garage. What can I do to get somebody to do something about it?
Councilwoman, you want to address that, or maybe David might know? David? Please. And again, David is with City Public Works.
Hey, Leo. I can come visit with you after this meeting and find out exactly where that's at. It may be a different division within Public Works, but we'll find out exactly what project that is, what we're doing, and if there's some work that you say is stopped or is incomplete, we'll make sure we know what's going on, so...
Can I ask one other question?
Sure. Me back.
We need a light at New Braunfels and Taylor Court. It is extremely...
What was the cross street name?
I almost got hit by a highway patrolman flying over the hill coming down, and I was turning onto New Braunfels. I even went over to GPS and gave him a piece of my mind on it. But we need a light, we really do. You've got the bus stop there, you've got other traffic coming in, and this is the matter where we have some power.
You said New Braunfels, and what was the intersection?
New Braunfels and Taylor Court.
Taylor Court.
F T R Court. It's down where the apartments are and C C Falls School is.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Macbeth, and he's offered to meet with you right after this. I would encourage you to do that, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, I heard a question during the presentation. What does Okin do?
Already, we'll do it. It does operations for Fort Mission and...
And this is Okin?
Yeah.
Okay. Okin does a variety of things, and they basically employ a lot of operators that are not just on the phone, but on computers and dealing with management of facilities, management of operations, management of data, et cetera. So, they provide various business services to multiple clients around the country and the world, really. And so, folks that, the perfect employee for Okin, quite frankly, is someone who's in college and needs a good part-time job or even a full-time job. And if you're literate with computers and particular software, the opportunities are there, and they've done a great job of hiring people literally from this area, okay? Any other questions before I, before Connie takes the mic from me? Yes, sir?
Just an option, I was noticing with the Green Line, the south side doesn't have a lot of swimming pools, and those are also difficult to maintain. I'm seeing splash pads, which would be more of a current way to have water feature that kids can play in, which is a lot safer. And I feel the ideal addition to the Green Line, I realize there's a dollar bill associated, but... but that kept coming along. Do you have splash pad at the...
I think that's a great idea. And unfortunately, we've not been able to afford it within the park. We're trying to find ways in the appropriate development where a private developer that's investing at Brooks might be able to incorporate it in their development. There's a couple of them that already sound exciting to us, but since they haven't completely committed, I don't want to put them on the spot, but, but I hear you, and we're fans of that concept, and I hope we're able to work with one of our developments to include a splash pad or splash pads. The, there are, there's a lack of swimming pools in the area. Is there anything being done to either bring swimming pools or not swimming pools? The newest concept is splash pads that everybody can still have fun, and, and my response is we're looking at various options for bringing some to Brooks.
There's a little over there at Brooks that got built in.
You're right.
I know.
You're, you're absolutely right.
Yes, I know.
You're right. That was, you're good. That was 10 years ago?
Oh, longer than that.
Longer than that? Okay.
My two girls, 35 and 45, swam in that, they're two years old.
Yeah. Well, we'll find, we'll find another option for it. Connie, what do I got to do next?
We're here too.
Am I done? All right. Everybody, thank you. It's good to see you all. Thanks for being out here. I'll be around if you have any questions afterwards.
Thank, oh, thank you, sir. A couple things before, before we move on. I do want to recognize one more board member, Alex Lopez. Thank you so much for being here. She's the, our representative from the city of San Antonio. She's an Assistant City Manager, so thank you so much for your service on our board as well, ma'am. I do want to recognize a couple of our businesses also here in attendance. In the back standing up, we have Mary Worth, and she's the Marketing Manager for Baptist Health System to include Mission Trail Baptist Hospital, home of one of the new baby units is what I'm going to call, because I don't even know the technical name, excuse me, Mary. But how exciting is it that now you can have babies right here on the southeast side of San Antonio? You don't have to drive to downtown anymore. So thank you so much, Mary, and the Mission Trail team for adding that to our growing hospital here. Leo did mention that extra space storage is also here, and so I do want to recognize Paul McClintock. He was part of bringing the extra space storage, and he also has, if you pass by that area off of City Base Landing, we have the Brooks Business Center. And so there's about 30 or so units that small businesses can also take part in. Again, it's off of City Base Landing, close to Aviation Landing. And then last but not least, we also mentioned South Lake at Brooks. And so if you are interested in getting on that list, Leo did mention that there's 63 units. We have about 90 people on the pre-sale waiting list, if you will, and there's an event this Saturday. I think about 100 people have already RSVP'd, so we know there's a demand for the for-sale housing. And Smiley Orozco is a local real estate agent, and he can give you more information about South Lake at Brooks if you're interested in the for-sale housing. All right. We have a lot of upcoming events. I mentioned Stephanie, who's outside, who can give you a little more, oh, she's right here, excuse me, who can give you a little more information. The first thing on this list, and we'll, we'll make sure to post this on our social media as well, this Thursday, we have the Big Give coming up. And so if you don't know, Brooks does have a nonprofit arm, which is called Brooks Gives Back. We are about to announce our third annual giving. I will let you know ahead of our official press release, but we will be distributing about $60,000 to three area nonprofits. I'm not going to tell you which three nonprofits yet, but I'll be, but we will be distributing another $60,000. And so part of that is because of the support that we have from the businesses here at Brooks, the employees at Brooks, and the employees of those businesses here at Brooks. And so Big Give is coming up on Thursday. If you do, and are feeling it in your heart today that you do want to support Brooks Gives Back, which supports the youth, the families, and the seniors in the surrounding area, you can get with Stephanie, and she does have her nice little credit card swiper ready to, to support Brooks Gives Back. But that's coming up on Thursday all day. Next up, Leo did mention that we have La Gloria, the margarita truck. It does come here on a monthly basis, and so you can catch it at the Green Line Roundabout. The next date is September 23rd, which is this Thursday, from 5:00 to 9:30. And so again, they're here once a month, leading up to their official grand opening, which we hope is later, right before the holidays later this fall. San Antonio Food Bank Distribution. We know the pandemic hit some a little bit harder than others, and so we've been very proud to be able to partner with the San Antonio Food Bank in hosting regular food bank distribution sites right here at Brooks. We know that there's always some at the Alamo Dome and some other areas of town, but we're glad that they were able to bring it here to the southeast side so that those don't have to drive too far. So the next site will be here Friday morning from 9:00 to 11:00. And so if you'd like to volunteer, or if you do need to take advantage of that opportunity, again, they'll be here. Their, their site is located nearby Mission Trail Baptist Hospital. South Lake at Brooks, they will be having an, an open house, and you can see the site of what the, of where the future 63 units will be. And so it's right across from the heart of the Green Line. They're going to be having a end-of-summer party on September 25th. That's this Saturday from 5:00 to 9:30. And again, I'm sure Smiley Orozco will be out there taking a look at that site, but they'll have live music, some food and drinks, and then of course promoting the, the for-sale houses that are coming to Brooks. Job Fair. How many of you all know somebody that is looking for a new job or looking for a job? A lot of us, right? And so we're, we're happy we host this, and we hosted one in March. It was a virtual job fair. We're happy that we're able to provide a hybrid event this time around, so both virtual and then also in person. It will be right here at Brooks, and so that's next week on September 29th from 9:00 to 2:00 p.m. We already have almost 30 employers signed up, ranging from construction industry to call center to medical, different positions. And so industries across the gamut. That job fair is going to be here September 29th from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., right here in this ballroom. And so whether you have an employer, you're, or you're an employer and want to sign up for the job fair, or if you know of someone, or if you are a job seeker looking to take part in this, we hope that you're able to come in and be a part of that here at the hotel. And last but not least, who's excited for the cooler weather? Yes, me too. We have a 5K coming up on October 2nd. I cannot promise that it will be super cool by that date, but hopefully it's a nice morning. And so we do have a 5K being hosted right at the Green Line, October 2nd. It starts at 8:00 a.m. A local medical facility is hosting that 5K, and we hope there's plenty more. And now with the Green Line extension, we hope that we're able to host 10Ks moving forward. And so a whole lot going on within the, the next couple of weeks. If you have any questions, again, you can get with myself, you can get with Stephanie Garcia, and then I know most of y'all heard about this meeting because of Facebook, and so continue to follow our social media for all of the different events that are coming up. Any questions on that long of list of activities and meetings? All right. We will hand out a prize, because y'all are too quiet. We're going to, right before Councilwoman comes on. Must be present to win. I think we have about 45 people signed in on our livestream right now. I apologize ahead of time. You must be present to win. Kenneth Johnson. Woohoo! Congratulations, Kenneth. Would you like a gift, a gift card to 1917 Restaurant, which is right here down the hallway, or at the spa, which is a little further down the hallway? The restaurant. Kenneth, here you go.
Can I speak for just a second?
Sure. Did you have a question?
Uh, no, more, more of a pronouncement.
Okay.
My name is Kenneth Johnson, and I own a little bookstore. It used to be not too far from here. My name is Kenneth Johnson. I own a little bookstore. It used to be not too far from here. It's called Dead Tree Books. I see some heads nodding. We, we were doing well. We were doing well for a while, and then things got a little bit bad. We are looking to reopen, hopefully soon, but we're still looking for a place. We don't know exactly where we're going to go, kind of hoping we might be offered something here, but you never know. We have a number of good things coming into this area, a lot of restaurants, some retail stores. Would like to, would like to explore a possibility with that.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kenneth. Thank you, thank you. Yes, a very well-known bookstore. Before we move on to our, our main event, sorry, Leo, not that you weren't the main event. Any other questions on, on this piece? All righty. I'll hand it over to the Councilwoman, who's going to be taking on some new things with the budget.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to walk up here because I do have a PowerPoint presentation, and I'm going to hopefully remember to click the slides. Hello, I am Phyllis Viagran, Councilwoman for the southeast and south side of San Antonio, District 3. I am so excited to see so many faces here today. Thank you for coming out, for taking time to hear about what's going on here. Brooks is not just part of District 3 and just a symbol of the resiliency that is District 3. It is a regional center. I think about the people that come from Floresville, Saguine, and, and farther to come up and to visit our restaurants and visit our parks, and that's why we call this a regional center, not just for the city, but for, for this part of the state. So I'm really excited to be here. Thank you, Leo, for that presentation, for all the hard work you do to the Brooks staff, for all their hard work, and for all the board members that are here and serve so well, to, to make sure that we continue to move forward here. On Thursday, September 16th, City Council passed a $3.1 billion operating capital budget. This was my first budget session, and with the federal stimulus dollars, it allowed the city to continue to provide essential city services. Before we pass the budget... So before we pass the budget, we made sure that we went out, the city departments, the Councilwoman Viagran, Rebecca Viagran's staff, went out and talked to the community, and these were the priorities that came from the surveys and over 12,000 surveys and the telephone, the town halls, and it was streets and sidewalks, public health, senior services, parks and recreation, and housing affordability. So with that, with those priorities, we moved forward in the city, and we got input, and we started the budget process. And as you see in the budget, we have our general fund, our restricted fund, and our capital program. And because of the federal funding that came down, we were able to keep the, the number at that $3.1 billion. So we didn't have the hit that we were expecting to, to have because of the pandemic, and we're very thankful for that because we know that our community was impacted by this. The priorities, you can see, some fall under the general fund with the basic city services, police, fire, streets, parks, libraries. We had our restricted funds, airport, development services, our hotel and occupancy tax, which goes to our arts programs, solid waste, and then the grants that we get. And I just want to tell you, our city staff works very hard to look for grants, to make sure that our city gets funded, and we get what we need to make sure that we move the entire city forward. And then we had our capital programs, which Leo talked about, which were our 2017 bond projects and our airport projects. So as a regional center, Brooks partners with the city to address these priorities, and they have done a great job, and I'm so excited that they're coming this next bond with the proposal of Sydney Brooks, because I feel like anything we can do that's east-west is essential, because there's a lot of north-south going on, but we need to get east-west corridors and make that a priority. So I'm, I'm looking forward to that and seeing how we can move, move that east-west connection, especially through our district. Here are some of the District 3 project highlights. As you see, Goliad Road, South Presa Street Project, Roosevelt Avenue, Esma Street Area, and then we have drainage improvement projects ongoing at Joe Marie and South Givers. If you have any questions on timelines, Public Works right there. So just ask him, and he can help you if you are having a, an issue with your project or you're wondering why. I am so glad we got that question. I know with new projects coming on, we have the issues of, of more trucks down the street, people using side streets to avoid the construction, and you can call, you can always call 311 and make a report, and you can also follow up with the, with my district office. And I want to introduce my staff that's here. There's Kelly Alcoce, and Kristi Hernandez was here somewhere in the back. Oh, she's outside in the back greeting people. But those are two, two of an incredible staff of seven that I have that will answer your questions and help you with follow-up. Now, it's important that we still call 311 to get directed to the right department, but always feel free to call the office and let them know what's going on, which my office, and I am committed to understanding that as these construction projects happen, it does make, it impacts the neighborhoods around them with, with the development. And how do we take that into consideration and make sure that we're communicating clearly so that you know when streets are getting closed, so you know that there's going to be bigger trucks, and they're, they're not coming down too early in the morning or too late at night? So that's why our, is, we are here, and that's just what comes when we get development. So I'm so excited that we have this development and these improvements, but it also comes with some, some headaches that we need to address. The other highlights that we had were our parks and libraries. So Jupe Manor Neighborhood Park is coming on the southeast side of San Antonio, and that's still, we're still, they're still working on that and under construction, and there'll be a nice playground there. McCreeless Branch Library, it's a very old library treasured in the neighborhood, and we are still working on that, and that's going to take a little longer than we expected, but the library services will be available at Southside Lyons Senior Center. So if you normally go to McCreeless, you can get the services over at McCree, at Southside Lyons. Pat American Library got their HVAC replacement, which we know is always important. And then Solado Creek is also coming online with their, with their development as a park. So we have some great projects going on, and we have the bond coming, and there's going to be a lot of people with a lot of ideas. But it's now your opportunity, as the city unveils their projects, for you to give input on the bond projects. And remember, these are big projects like Leo presented, fixing Sydney Brooks. These are park projects, regional parks, and these are also, we are going to have the opportunity this go-around to possibly do a housing project. And that's where I need your input also, because I sit on the Housing Trust and other committees, so I need to hear from you in terms of what you want to see the city do with dollars for housing and affordability. So these are just some great things coming, some great things from our, our budget and our bond. One of the things that I am going to advocate for and, and excited about is that we did get five ACS officers for direct engagement to help residents. So I'm excited about that, but I know that we have issues with strays in this area. And so I'm looking to get more funding, and we already have a million dollars in the budget to help with span neuter, but we, we do need more to address the issues of the strays in our area. And so I'll be working on that for bond and ARPA dollars, and I'll be reaching out to you. And if you have any ideas or know where you want to be helped, that's where you fill up this, fill out the survey or go online to SA Speaks app, or call the district office, and they can help you go through that survey, because the more we do online, the better. Because the more we do online, the better for the city, because it goes out citywide. Another highlight was resiliency. We're putting 8.5 million towards that. And this is just to make sure that we, what we face in the winter crisis is we're better prepared for that. And so you can see some of the things that we have planned. The one thing I put forward and I'd like to see expanded is let's definitely do the four main hubs, but let's have a list of like 12 hubs of churches. I know Embassy Brooks opened up as a charging station and a warming spot during the winter storm. So let's have a whole list. So if we hit that crisis again, or when we do hit a natural disaster again, we know where the places are that will open up their doors and that will provide some safety and some respite from what's happening. So we have this coming also. And there is the big bond program. 1.2 billion program. As you see, August and September and the calendar of what we're doing, the community meetings are starting next month. This is where you need to be involved in say, Brooks is a regional center, so we need money for our regional center, Brooks, and we need money for our district-specific projects also. And there's going to be, the South Side First is here with Judy Canales, if you can wave your hand. And Al Ariola is here with the South Chamber. And these two are good people to talk to also if you have questions about the bond program and what you think you should support and what's going to help our small businesses as we move forward also. So we have tons of opportunity moving forward. And I am your voice on the City Council at the dais to move what your initiatives and priorities are forward. That's why I need you to fill out the surveys. I need you to call 311 and make those complaints. And then I need you to follow up with my staff and my office to tell me this, I didn't hear from SARS, or I didn't hear from CPS, or this is the situation. Because together with our voices in chorus, we can, we speak louder. I speak with you guys having my back and we get things done. So I'm very excited to be here and to present this good news today. I have, we have tons of events coming up also. I want to thank the U.S. Army that was out here giving vaccinations and rapid tests and kind of helping and they're there. Yeah, thank you, let's give them a hand. They're at my office every Monday from 2:00 to 5:00. If you had a scare or you talked to someone who was positive and you want to go get tested, you can always go for the rapid test Mondays from 2:00 to 5:00. You can also take any family or friends that may need to get vaccinated. They have all three, so they can have their choice of that. And we are just here, visit my office, follow us online. We have tons of events coming forward. And this Friday, we'll be working with CPS on, at a fair at the VFW on VFW Boulevard to make sure that we get every, that we don't have any disruption of service, that everybody's on a plan and their service continues with CPS. So please come out and visit me on Friday, starting at 3:00, 3 o'clock at the VFW. So at this time, I will take any questions you may have. And of course, if Public Works is here, they may take that question. And now I've got CPS here, so they may take a question. So anyone have any questions? Yes?
Councilwoman, I moved here about nine months ago. I've been alive here at Brooks. And here, I know you've been talking about really great development here in this, in the Brooks area. Well, we need quality teachers. Is there any way that we can provide incentive for teachers in the area? Because quality teachers create quality schools. And that's because of the office.
Thank you for that question because that brings me to SA Ready to Work that we have. And Alex Lopez, who is here, we have that information. We don't want to get everybody back to work. And we have a program that's working with different industries to find out what they need and how we can get people back to work. So I'm sure Alex is going to take note of that and we'll take that to the Committee on Economic Workforce and see what we need to get more quality teachers here. Thank you. Yes? And so the question was, what can we do to get quality teachers trained and quality teachers here in San Antonio in the district? So we'll be doing that by using the SA Ready to Work program that we have. And we're using a different, a variety of resources to make sure that our residents get back to work. Any other questions? Well, I look forward to seeing you around. If you have a church group or a social group or any type of group and you would like me or my staff to come out and present, and I can always bring city staff also, we can come out to your neighborhood, we can come out to your church group and present. And I want to thank you for sharing about Dead Tree Books because I am going to work with my economic development group because we have a lot of empty storefronts in and around the area and we need to do something about that. So thank you for coming up. And I want to encourage anyone else who's an entrepreneur or who's thinking about starting a small business. We have Southside First here, we have the Southside Chamber. Maybe now's the time. And I'm going to be there at City Hall and I'm going to be advocating for you and for small business and making sure that my community gets taken care of. Thank you so much, have a great evening.
Good morning. You want to raffle off?
Oh, we're going to do one more raffle, it's for the Spa. Linda Wenck.
Yay! So the two prizes we gave out today, Kenneth, the restaurant is right down the way. Happy Hour is already happening. I think Thursdays is when they have live music, so full bar, awesome, awesome food. And then Euphoria Spas is just a little further down, right across from Euphoria Spa. I do want to recognize Linda Lazo, who's almost in the back row. Linda, if you can, yes. So so she has several clients in the audience today. If you don't like my hair, then, she didn't do my hair. No, she did. Several different models, including her beautiful head of hair. She has a full-service salon, hair, mani-pedis, or just to drop in and enjoy some cheese mani, a glass of wine, whatever you need. Her salon is down the way as well. And so again, support local. Kenneth, our business development director will be touching base with you to learn a little more about some opportunities possibly here or in the area. That almost concludes today's meeting. I do want to recognize again, outside of our doors, we do have the Army providing vaccinations. If you have not been vaccinated, boosters. Or if you just want their information, like you, like the Councilwoman mentioned, they are there at her office every single Monday so that you can take advantage of the vaccinations or boosters or rapid test. Thank you again so much for, yes ma'am?
So I thought I would come to the Brooks meeting here. We have a food forest that we're creating off of South Padre. And it is a community-driven project. And we need everybody's feedback as to what kind of fruit trees you want planted, the design of everything is really open. It's the beginning stages of it. I thought I would come and bring some flyers if anybody's interested in, you know, this is our side of town and we're going to be creating the food forest so that way there's free food for the community. We haven't, everything is a creation process right now. So could I leave these somewhere?
Yes, the front table right outside.
Front table, okay, thank you.
Yes, yes. All right, we're giving you almost 20 minutes of your lives back. Again, thank you all so much for being here. We did focus a lot on what's happening here on our physical campus. But if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to any of the people that I called out with any questions or concerns. Again, thank you all so much for being a part of today's Town Hall meeting. Y'all have a great evening. Thank you, David.